Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public hearing tonight. And this is a public hearing for quality cannabis in Arlington Township, Van Buren County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be assisting with moderating the public hearing tonight. But before we get into introducing the rest of our Eagle staff who are on the line tonight, I'm just going to go through a couple logistical items. First off, this is going to be our agenda for today. We'll go through the introduction, but the big thing to be aware of is that this public hearing is basically broken into two parts. There's an informational session of last probably about 10 minutes or so where we'll go through some information on the project. And then there'll be a question and answer session immediately following where you'll have a chance to ask questions related to the application and the project. We'll plan on that not going past around 6:30 to allow plenty of time for the next part, which is the official hearing. And that's where you'll have a chance to make an official statement for the record on this project and application. And we're also going to go through some other ways to submit an official comment. And then who will also to contact with further questions after the. For those of you who aren't familiar with Zoom, our Zoom public hearings that we're doing, all lines are muted during the meeting, so you'll be able to hear us, but we can't hear you. You can submit your questions using the questions box and Zoom toolbar at any time. And we'll also have a chance to be able to raise your hand during the Q and A session, and we'll go through how to do that for those of you who aren't familiar right beforehand. And then also, we are recording this meeting. It'll be on our YouTube channel in a couple days, in case you need or want to review it again later. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to invite Derek Harrelson and Kyle Alexander to kick off the hearing and introduce themselves.
Hello there, everybody. Derek Harrelson, Kalamazoo District Office. I'll be the hearings officer, kind of helping with Ryan running the hearing tonight.
And I'm Kyle Alexander. I'm the district supervisor for the Water Resources Division. We're out of the same office as Derek does. Thanks, everybody, for attending.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you both. So kind of at this part, we're going to start by going through some information on the project. Derek, if you just want to let me know when you want to move on to the next slide and I'll switch sides for you.
Sure. Yeah, so the project is for, there's kind of several, a couple different components, but this first plan is just kind of overall site map showing where the property is located in Arlington Township off 48. The west side of the road. So you can go to the next one, Ryan. Which is actually kind of an overview of the site. So there's a couple different components to the after the fact permit request, which means the work's always already been done and they're seeking authorization through the permit. One of those is the placement of riprap in a wetland at the outlet of the stormwater basin. And on this plan, that's at the bottom of the page. In general, it's along the south side of the property, kind of at the toe of the slope. There's a small stream that flows west to east to the property. There's some adjacent wetlands. Riprap has been placed, about five cubic yards of riprap was placed in that wetland. So they're seeking after the fact permission for that. And then at the driveway entrance to the building, as you can see on this plan, that it comes in from 48th Avenue to the west. There's a stream crossing there and a culvert that was placed within the stream. That's for the roadside ditch there. So the other part of the after the fact from requests is for permission for the permit to, for that 41 foot long culvert, four foot wide with some dredging to place it within the stream. And then the, you can go to the next slide. This is a detailed plan, kind of an overhead plan of the new culvert. I'll mention there was an existing culvert, just a little further south on the stream that was removed. So this plan shows what was constructed. It shows the new culvert, it's 41 feet long. It also shows proposed rock or riprap that would be placed in the stream and up and down, up at the banks in this location to kind of provide some scar protection and stabilization at the culvert end. We can go to the next slide. Which is a cross section view of the culvert from the north. Two views from the north, a section of the culvert and the southern end of the culvert showing the existing, basically the existing roadside ditch containing the stream in the culvert with corresponding elevations. And next slide. This is a cross sectional profile of the stream at the culvert that has been placed, showing the stream elevations, the culvert that's there, the driveway that's there, the culvert inverts, and the proposed riprap on both sides of the culvert. So the plan summarizes the work that's being, the work that's been submitted, that's been performed and the work that's going to be covered as proposed under the permission. And I believe that's, there may be, I'm sorry, there's, there's more of a page of typical kind of drawings, though really a lot of them related to the stormwater basin. The stormwater basin, detention basin, and all that was constructed in Upland. So that's not something that required Eagle permits. You can go to the next one, Ryan. And these are tip, kind of typical drawing components of the stormwater basin and other features of the site that were in Upland and outside of our jurisdiction. At the very bottom of this page, there's a typical drawing that shows the riprap for the stormwater outflow. For this project, the riprap is placed in about a six foot long by seven foot wide area of wetland, about five cubic yards. And I believe that is the end of the drawings that depict the work that's after the fact approval sought for.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the last one we have. We're going to move into the Q and A session here. There is engineer representing applicant is on the line in case there are any questions that would be applicable to the engine, to Tim Stewart, the engineer from Hurley and Stewart, to answer in case we get to that point. And we'd like to bring him in. But to review how to ask a question again, so you'll see a Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. This is Q and A, you can click on that, type in your question to us, or you can raise your hand. So you'll see a hand, you'll be able to raise your hand, there's a hand icon at the bottom of your screen that you can click on to raise your virtual hand. Or if you're on the phone, let me check to see, I don't see. Oh, there's one phone and caller. So if you're the phone and caller and you'd like to raise your hand and ask a question, you can select pound two, that will raise your, your hand in Zoom, and then you'll be able to unmute yourself on your phone and ask your question. So we'll just go kind of go back and forth between those as people who had their hand raised in the question and answer box. So you can go ahead and do that now if you'd like. I'm not seeing any questions in the question and answer box at this time. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay, there's one hand raised. Looks like we have Ron Klein. We're going to go ahead and unmute you so that you can ask your question and then you'll be able to unmute yourself. It looks like you're unmuted on our end, Ron. You can unmute yourself by clicking the mute, unmute button, and then you can go ahead and ask your question. Ronnie, he is very difficult to hear. It's very pixel.
I have a question. Hello, guys. My question is very simple that is this, that those of us that receive NRCS, can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can hear you. It's clear now.
Okay. Those of us that work with NRCS and USDA have to build our, and, and build our, our sites and also deal with any wetland issues to a, a 10 year rain event standard, which is 3.66 inches of rain in 24 hours. Those of us that are familiar with this area of Arlington Township know that it receives quite, it receives quite a bit of drainage from adjacent properties. And my, my question is, what is the rain event standard that this site has been built to? And will it be able to accommodate the amount of water in a standard, let's say, 10 year rain event?
I think I can, well, I can, I think I can partially address that, Ron, but then I would ask that Tim Stewart, if Hurley and Stewart can maybe confirm. So again, the stormwater basin that was constructed, I know it was, was in Upland. So it wasn't something that we had to review, it wasn't something that we did review. I believe the Van Buren County requirements are a 25 year storm event. And I believe that that's what the, I believe that's how it was designed. But I guess I would ask the, the applicant's engineers with Hurley and Stewart if they could, if they could kind of expand on that or provide any more info.
Okay, yeah, we can unmute Tim Stewart. It looks like his hands raised, so we'll go ahead and do that. Right. Are you on the line, Joel, having trouble unmuting him? A lot of talk here. There we go. Yeah, I was having a little trouble. It looks like you can go ahead and, and. Go ahead and respond to him.
Can you hear me okay, Ryan?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, this is Tim Stewart from Hurley and Stewart. Yeah, Derek's exactly right. The, the standard for this site per the Van Buren County Drain Commissioner is to design the site to detain a 25 year storm. And, and we did, we did just that and received approval from the Drain Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, thank you for chiming in there.
Yep, thank you, Tim.
All right. Are there any other questions? Check the Q and A box. Okay, it looks like we do have a question that was typed in. Can you address the issue with sediment from the construction site flowing under the road to the Paw Paw River?
Yeah, so I guess I would adjust it just by saying that we are aware that, that we, yeah, so we're aware that there's been complaints about during construction, kind of of this site in the last year, that there were, you know, discharges of sediment into downstream receiving waters and that there was, you know, was related back to construction activities on this site. So I can just say that I know a soil erosion permit was issued from the county and that there were, there may have been some issues that the county worked with the permit, the applicant here to get the kind of property back in compliance as well with soil erosion with Part 91. So in terms of any kind of future discharges, you know, I guess from a stormwater standpoint, we don't have a really concern. I mean, understanding the basin is in Upland, the basin is properly sized, based on, you know, a large, being able to handle a large rain event before there's discharge or with the treatment. I guess what we're looking at in our review is the, mainly the culvert that's being proposed, is that constructed in a way where we can permit it without concerns, you know, about exacerbating any sediment discharges downstream. But I would just say that I'm aware that a lot of the comments we've received dealt with things, impacts, sediment that was observed as coming downstream, you know, from the vicinity of the site during construction. I believe it's, I believe the site stabilizing is, you know, in accordance to Part 91 and soil erosion now, but that's a little bit outside of what we're, what Eagles review at this point. So I don't know if that, that helps at all, but.
All right, you can, you can unmute yourself, Ron. Okay, Ron, did you want to ask your question?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on the response that I received from, you have to help Mr. Stewart. And that question is this, that that particular property does have a great, well, I'm going to just say water that drains to it from properties to the west and to the north. And in rain events, at least of 2021, there was a lot of water that had accumulated and historically accumulates on that property after even, but I'm going to call non, well, let's just say not 25 year rain events or 10s. In, in consideration of both the, the drainage coming off that property was the amount of drainage coming onto it, taken into consideration when the drainage was, or structures were designed, and will those structures actually accommodate that additional water from a, a 10 year or 25 year rain event? That's the additional water coming to the property, draining onto the property.
Any, any thoughts on that? So the question, is the question, the additional water, that's running?
I think, Ron, I think he's asking about.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. My question is, is that I'm going to speak in layman terms here, that, that property almost looks like it's a reservoir for water that's draining from the west and also from the north. And the drainage patterns can be seen, I, I think fairly easy in some of the satellite photographs that we reviewed. And when you drive past the property after a rainstorm, there's water that accumulates. And my question is that in, is that extra drainage water, has that been taken into consideration in the design of the project?
All right.
I guess I would defer, I defer over to Tim Stewart for, with Hurley and Stewart, I guess, to answer that. I guess maybe just confirm that that, I believe that sizing does factor in the contributing drainage area, which can be, you know, it's regardless of property boundaries, I believe. But maybe Tim can shed some light on basically what is that, what, what, what area of land is considered in the contributing area, basically?
Yeah. Yeah, you're exactly right, Derek. That, that is definitely was taken into consideration when, when designing the drainage system for this particular property is, what, what was the entire contributing area and not just the property alone?
Okay, thanks for the comment and the question.
I, I would like to follow up. Would it be possible? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, no, you, you can follow up. I don't have any other questions. So if you have an additional question to follow up, you can go ahead and do so.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to destroy my mute, unmute button here. Is it possible for us to see those calculations, for people to see those? I'm, I'm very curious about the volume of water that we're talking about and the ability of the design to control that.
Well, I know, Ron, it's not something that was a part of our file, you know, part of what's on record with us. There may be some, there may be some notes on the actual plans that talk about stormwater counts. But I think you're referencing like the stormwater calculations to kind of check to see what was, what was contributing area. Um, yeah, I guess we don't have, if it was something that Eagle had, if those documents were something that were a part of our file, we could certainly provide them. I, I don't know if there's something that's on record in a public entity like the Drain Office, we could just request them if the township's come, or, you know, if the, if, you know, the owner, the applicant here would be willing to share them. But I, I think there's probably a couple ways to share that information, so.
Okay, thanks for the question and for the response, Derek. Are there any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Any typed in at this point, and how many hands raised? And so just to clarify, I guess, before we do move on, the next, next part of the public hearing will be to, we're going to go through other ways to make the public comment. And then we'll all, then we'll also go through the hearing portion tonight where you can actually make your comment, official comment for the record. So we are going to go through that here in a second. And I did mute, or I did lower hands. So if there's any other hands raised, looks like I have a question in the Q and A box now, so I'm going to go ahead and. So the question is, please confirm there was not a formal, an Eagle review prior to this after the fact review. The applicant indicated at the planning commission meeting that they're, they're waiting for written approval from Eagle. I don't know.
Yeah, I guess to, yeah, I guess to address that, Jill. So, I mean, we did do, the owner requested a pre-application meeting with us on site, I believe, October 2020. And so we reviewed the property at that time. We walked the property, reviewed, proposed, you know, generally, we're doing this here, buildings here, driveway here, kind of thing. So we talked about in general, conceptually, where things were going to go on the site. You know, like I advised them at the time, there's a stream on the property, there's wetlands around the stream. So there's currently requirements related to any wetland impacts. And then also, you know, the need for driveway permit, because the driveway involved the culvert, which is going to end up impacting the stream that's in the roadside ditch. So we did, we did a pre-application meeting. We didn't do a formal follow up letter. We basically kind of had an email where we kind of summarized all those things. So there was an onsite review, October 2020, where I, before we got that permit application, you know, we had a chance to review the site. Again, like I said, determined most of the site was Upland, was non-wetland. And, you know, good, obviously from that point, that it wasn't impacting resources, but that if, whether we're going to be structures in the wetland, permit would be required. And then, you know, that ended up happening. So we're now, you know, reviewing the, the after the fact permit to get those things authorized, so.
All right, thanks, Derek. Thanks for the question. Again, yeah, feel free to type your question in or raise your hand or raise it again if you've already asked a question, if you have any. If not, we're going to move forward. Looks like Ron has his hand raised. So Ron, we're going to unmute you again. All right, you're muted on our end.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'd like to, to just ask one quick question, one, one quick question of, well, of Derek, your, your jurisdiction does extend to the, the stream that's at the outflow point of the culvert that goes under 48th Street? And I guess my question is the following, is there, are there any plans to restore the stream that flows down to the Paw Paw River in terms of the sediment that's modified the, the direction of the flow of the stream? And also deal with the damage that was done to the property immediately to the south of the culvert? I'm, I'm talking basically about restoration of the stream.
I guess, no, there's not, Ron, because we have, it's not something that, besides complaints of impact, it's not something that I've got onsite and been able to, you know, investigate in terms of a possible complaint, possible discharge. So, yeah, I would say at this point, any cleanup or restoration offsite, basically, or onsite within the stream, isn't something that's, that's been discussed or, you know, it's been really a consideration, so.
All right, thanks.
Well, okay, I'll. Do we follow up on, well, I'll follow up on that with you then.
Okay, so good.
Yep, I don't, and I don't have any.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem, Ron. And I don't have any other questions at this point. So if there is a follow up question that's separate that you wanted to ask, you're welcome to do so. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to lower your hand here, just so we know that, that there isn't another question at this point. And then you can raise it again if another one comes up. Any other questions before we move on to the next portion of the public hearing tonight? I'm not showing any in the Q and A box, any further ones at this point. And I don't have any other hands raised. So we're going to go ahead and move to the next part of the public hearing tonight. Yeah, thanks, thanks to Tim Stewart and our, and Eagle staff for answering those questions and for all of you who asked a question tonight. So with that. We're going to talk about other ways to submit an official comment. In case you didn't want to make it, you're listening, you didn't want to make a comment tonight. At the hearing portion, there are some other ways to, to submit an official comment. Ones through my waters and the information on my waters and the submission is here on your screen. It is also in the public notice that was published. And then also by mail, I'm going to read that aloud because I know that someone's on the phone. It's by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, 7953 Adobe Road, A D O B E, that's how you spell Adobe Road. That's Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. And again, that's 7953 Adobe Road. And I will go through that address one more time tonight in case you missed it or missed part of it. And then the comment period after the public hearing will be open for 10 days through February 25th. And so again, if you didn't want to make a, a public hearing or a statement tonight, or you think of something after the fact, after the hearing's over, that you want to make a statement on, you're welcome to do so by these other means. But for tonight, we're going to go ahead and start this part, next portion of the public hearing portion where anyone who's on the line here can make a comment. And I'm going to invite Derek to read the opening statement for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So folks, just kind of bear with me. I'm going to read, the opening statement is just kind of from a template, so. Okay, first of all, good evening. My name is Derek Harrelson and I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as the hearing officer for the public hearing on Eagle submission With me tonight to assist with the hearing is Kyle Alexander, Kalamazoo District Supervisor. So to describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here this evening. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we'll take your comments and describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be timed for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read a closing statement. So the following is kind of background information. So the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, flood plains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection structures or docks, and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or flood. So the law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Public Act 451 of 1994. Public Act 451 of 1994, as amended, otherwise known as Act 451. So we're here tonight because William Steele of WKS Land Holdings LLC or Foley Cannabis has proposed the following. For after the fact authorization of removal of an existing culvert and fill, a dredging approximately one cubic yard of material from an area of stream bottom lands measuring 50 feet long and three feet wide to a depth of approximately four inches. Placement of a new 41 foot long, four foot diameter culvert and backfill in the stream to construct the driveway. And placement of approximately five cubic yards of riprap in wetlands at the stormwater outfall. So after the fact approvals being sought for that, plus the placement of an additional 30 cubic yards of riprap at either section of the culvert. So in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activity described in the public notice needs certain criteria set by Parts 301 and Part 303. So in general, we must consider the effect of the project on the stream and the wetlands. So when reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301 and the lakes and streams of Act 451, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by Section 301 of 6 of Part 301. Number one, that the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. And two, that the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part 303 Wetlands Protection of Act 451, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by Section 30311 of Part 303. A permit for an activity listed in Section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. That section also states that a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to aquatic resources. And that a permit shall not be issued unless the department, unless the applicant also shows either of the following, that the activity is primarily dependent upon being located in a wetland or that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the permit application an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. So in just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Sunday, January 30th edition of the reminder. So as we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a moment, I'm sorry, if you have a comment to provide, you can raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar to, and so, and then to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we're going to follow these steps for the comment period. So the, we've already had the Q and A session and the consultants, the applicants, engineers had a chance to answer some questions. We've described the project in general. Next, we'll start calling on those that have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak, make a comment. After that, we'll call on anybody else that's raised their hand in Zoom, indicating that they want to make a comment. So we've called on everybody. So as a reminder, if you are participating in the hearing via telephone only, and I think there's at least one person, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via my waters, via email or via US mail that we've outlined before, and we'll go over that again. And then when all the comments have been completed, we'll ask if anyone else just would like to make a statement or any more comments. So when we, when Ryan calls your name, just, we will unmute your microphone. And then as you begin your comments, just state your name and any group or association you may represent. Everybody will have, you know, around four minutes to make their comments. We should have plenty of time. Just indicate if we're running short on time, we'll maybe indicate to wrap it up. And it may be, well, you know, we should have enough time, but we just need to be mindful about everybody's amount of time to comment. So. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the project and to listen to those comments. So. As Ryan noted earlier, the hearing's being recorded and your comments are going to be part of the information Eagle will consider making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. So the public comment period for this public hearing is open for 10 days from the date of the hearing from today, which is through February 25th, 2022. So any additional information and comments submitted in writing during that time will be considered in our decision. And then following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will then make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed with modifications or to send a letter of denial. And then you may find out what the decision is and track that by checking the my waters website and searching for the application number, which I'll get, I'll read again here. It's HPA dash 701H dash HF R6Z. Okay, thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who've indicated they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thanks, Derek. As Derek mentioned, you had a chance to indicate if you wanted to make a statement or not during registration. I'll call, I have one name, I'll call the name. And then after, after that, then it'll be open to anybody else. You can raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. You know, at the bottom of your screen, if you're on the phone, like Derek had mentioned, we do have one person on the phone. You can select pound two on your phone and it'll raise your hand and zoom. And then when we call your name, we'll unmute you and you should get prompted to unmute yourself and we'll be able to give your statement. Again, you have four minutes. You know, I'll try to give you about a minute heads up when, when you're getting close, just so, so that you know when you're getting close and everybody will get a chance to make their statement. And again, when your name is called as well, you know, please state your name and then any, if you have any affiliation, you're welcome to state that as well. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. So the first person is Ron Klein is the, the person who I have as registered. So Ron, we are going to unmute you and you can go ahead and start your statement after you unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you. I, my earlier comments were sort of a lead in to the, the statement that I'd like to make. And I will probably follow up with this with a, a written statement after I hear the rest of the hearing. But my primary concern is the amount of water that flows onto that property, as I mentioned before, and the, the ability to both not only contain it and control it, but also if there's going to be a disruption of the flow of that water going into the wetland in the adjacent property to the south. That is to say, will any, will there be any retention issues with water damaging the wetland or damaging the source of the stream that flows to the west on the, under 48th Street? That's a concern that I would have in just observing the property and driving by on several occasions after storms, including the ones last year. As I said, there seems to be a significant amount of water that's accumulated on that property. And I am just concerned that it's, that the, the structures and even doing, I'm going to call them back of the napkin calculations for a, the, a 10 year rain event that the control of that water would not be adequately accommodated by the current plan. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Ron. All right. So at this point, we're going to open it up to anybody else who is on the line who would like to make a comment. Again, just raise your virtual hand in Zoom and I will call off your name and unmute you and I'll give you a chance to make your, your statement if you'd like. And again, and if, again, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two on your phone and raise your hand in Zoom as well. And right now I don't have any hands raised. So just give it another couple of seconds here to see if anybody would like to make a comment before moving on to the next part of the hearing. So I'll go ahead and give it another couple of seconds. Still not showing anybody with their hand raised. If anybody, and we'll also, I should mention, we're also going to go through other ways to make a comment one more time too. So you'll be able to review that if you don't want to make a comment tonight. So I don't see any other hands raised at this point. So I think we're going to go ahead and read the closing statement. So Derek, did you want to go ahead and kick off the closing statement?
Sure, will do. Okay, well, we thank you for coming. We appreciate comments, operation. Appreciate your interest in the project, taking the time to be here. So as we indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you have time, some additional comments, written comments, so we can accept those through February 25th, 2022. So that's 10 days from today. Following the close of the public comment period, so sometime after that, we'll consider all comments received and we'll make a decision on the project. So just to remind you of how to submit comments, I will go over that again, but they can be submitted directly to my waters, which is our permitting compliance database. They can be emailed to me or they can be sent to our district office via mail. So the hearing is now closed and thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Derek. And I put the, that same slide up on the screen with the other ways to make an official comment and, and Derek had just gone through those. And just for the folks who are on the phone, the mail address is 7953 Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. And it's Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, in case you want to send any in my mail. And then really the final thing that we wanted to share tonight was who to contact for the questions. Since I have Derek's contact information up here, in case you have other follow up questions. This phone number is 2695693609 or harrelsond@michigan.gov. That's H A R O L D S O N D at mi.gov. Or you can also spell out michigan.gov. That will work just as well. And so with that, I'm going to invite Kyle. Did you have any, I guess, closing comments for us tonight?
No, nothing for me, Ryan. Thanks, everybody for participating. And thank you to Derek and Ryan for moderating.
All right, yeah, thanks, Kyle. Yeah, and thank you all for participating. As I mentioned previously, this hearing is being recorded. It'll be on our YouTube channel in a few days. Yeah, thanks again, and I hope you all have a great rest of your evening.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, all.